Good evening and welcome back to Almost Normal. Welcome to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners' June 16th meeting. I call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Richardson to open us with invocation, please.
Call me in prayer, please. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today, thank you, and we praise you, Lord. Many blessings that you say. But we ask for protection, men and women that be able to enforce my duty, our rescue, all of the people that are first responders. Wisdom to guide us. Honor you, all the citizens, all these things I pray in.
Amen. Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Messengers, you have the minutes from the June 2nd meeting in your book. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
No move, sir.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. As far as the agenda, we have one item that's been removed, the memorandum of understanding with the Development Authority. Go straight down into special recognition, and there's somebody who's asked to speak, Mr. Justin Rushing. Come on down. If you would, please, give us your name and address, record.
Rushing, 4435 Washington Road, Evans, Georgia. Spirits Drive through, right up here. All right, so it said I had five minutes when I signed up, so if you guys have met me, it's going to take about five hours, sorry. No, so I've got a couple of-
Get in the back, we're good.
Okay, okay. I've got a couple of just, you know, things I want to bring to everybody's attention, not sure if you're aware, or if you are aware, you may or may not know. So, in Columbia County, we've already got X amount of liquor stores. So there's an application being applied for that's approximately 750 yards from my exact location. And that same street, if you go back this way, you've got Liquor Land. Two years ago, I was here as well, that one was approved as well. That one's about the same distance, just with a little slight turn. So on Washington Road, there's three quarters of a mile with the new, you know, the one that's being questioned, whether they're going to get the license or not. That will put three liquor stores within three quarters of a mile, roughly, and four liquor stores within a four-mile radius, if you go all the way out to Riverwood. So I guess my questions would be, is like, how many liquor stores in a confined area is enough? And going to keep adding every 500 yards, which is the state distance. So I understand everybody's in business to be in business, I get that, and everybody has his right to be in business. How many is enough in a confined space in order to not just flood the area with liquor? So, you know, Gordon Highway used to be Augusta Motor Mile. So essentially, you guys are going to have the Evans Liquor Mile, because there will be that many liquor stores in that short span of space, which is fine. I mean, if you get thirsty after you leave my store, 41 seconds later, you can stop at another store, because that's approximately how long it takes. And with the exception of the sign that's been down for about a week now, I think the mowers knocked it down, but anyhow. So then, approximately, maybe five minutes, depending on traffic, you can be at the next liquor store. And if they put another one out and further, you could be at the next one, you know, keep going the opposite direction. Now, I do realize there are clusters of where the people are, and so that's approximately what it looks like, with the exception of Grove Town, which didn't make the map. The blue is the, you know, one that's being either approved or denied, and then this is Liquor Land, this is me, my goodies. Now, the other three are down here. Now, keep in mind, this is Beverjall at Bobby Jones', this is Harvard's', and this is Evans Package and Martinez'. So, that being said, generally speaking, if you go this close to another store, which is just outside the limits, it's usually malintentioned. So the idea in our industry, which we're at 17% margins right now, it's very thin. I mean, that's just operating just above what you keep your head floating in the liquor world. Generally don't go that close to another store, because A, you're either doing it malintentioned, or B, you just don't know what you're doing. Nothing wrong with anybody that tries that, it does work oftentimes, but what you're doing is you're shrinking the sales everywhere else. So if you've got that many stores around me, you're going to squeeze me out, so I'm not asking for protection, I don't deserve protection. Everybody deserves the right to be in business. But after four years, the last time a big multi-store came in, that one store shut down after four. The next big store that came in, that next small mom-and-pop store lasted two years before they shut down. So there's about four liquor stores that have closed over these big ones coming in. I know that's the way of the world, if you Google it now, you will find that the mom-and-pop liquor stores are the way of the dodo bird, it's just, they're not existing. And the big liquor stores are what's working, and that's what everybody wants, is these big box stores, nothing wrong with that. But again, I'm not asking for protection from this, I'm just asking for when I do close my doors, because I've already lost 150,000 in sales from the last store that was on top of me. My guess is I'll probably last four years, I'm just asking for, you know, a county job, so I can pay these loans back after I do close my doors. So that's where I'm going with that, it's like, you know, just want something with benefits, so I can help pay these loans back, I've still got about eight years left. So I just wanted to bring some of that information to everybody's attention in the county. And it might be a tourist attraction, you never know, the Evans Liquor Mile, you know, every 40 seconds, you can stop at a liquor store. It's not like a barber shop, we're not going to someone for their talent, whether they can cut your hair a certain way. You're actually selling the exact same product over and over, but in just a different doorstep, essentially. Now, everybody knows that buying deals allow different prices and different things on the shelves, but it's not a barber shop. It's literally like the equivalent of putting in McDonald's every 700 yards. McDonald's doesn't do that, so what is too many liquor stores in an area? What's the county going to come up with, you know, for, is there going to be a number eventually? Are we going to be full? Is like 50 enough? Is five enough? You know, just those questions, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, and ask for a county job in about five years. And that's all, I appreciate you guys letting me talk, do you have any questions?
Say that the state limit is every 500 yards?
Yeah, which is kind of crazy, you know, when I first went in there, it makes sense, because I've pretty much got the 500-yard radius of actual existing buildings. I would have never seen in the future somebody buying a piece of property on Washington Road. It's a nice piece of property, it's still got to be cleared, that just wouldn't envision, like, I didn't think I'd have to worry about that. You know, the next one down is far enough, you know, it's too close, but the next one down, there's nothing. And then the one that's maybe being built in years, I don't even know where that's going to be yet, I can just see the retention wall being built before you get to Riverwood. But, yeah, the state, I believe, is 500 yards, and for the most part, you know, I've got that locked. The other benefit to where I'm at is if the state, which is GADA, they go to fight all these rules to keep the small businesses going, it's the Georgia Alcohol Dealers Association. And there's a bunch of attorneys involved there to keep the small ones in business, that they only allow two in the state. Now, there's ways around that, so you do have people with three and four, but they, you know, find a way to trick the names on the licensing. So that keeps me in business when they pass that, because it's actually gone up twice in the last two years to allow more than two stores. So that means as soon as that happens, every Kroger, Walmart, major grocery store will be able to sell alcohol, not just beer and wine. It'll literally be able to allow them to apply for license. So that's got me protected from Walmart right now, I feed off that Walmart traffic, which makes sense, but if they go to being allowed to sell liquor, they can't. Because the state won't allow them until they make something to get rid of my store, and that's got me protected from Walmart. Same thing, because it's within that distance, but this is just literally maybe 250 yards past that.
Which side of the road is this applicant?
Right side.
They on the same side?
Yeah, same side, actually, they're all on the same side, funny enough. There's a lot of right turning to get out.
Going home's side of the road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Every item on here has gone through committee and received the necessary vote to be placed on this consent agenda, so if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all with one vote.
Motion to accept.
Okay. Any discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. On to the debate agenda, Commissioner Malier.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021, adopting an annual budget for all funds of Columbia County, Georgia for fiscal year 2020-2021.
Second.
Johnson, you want to give us a, just a quick rundown?
I can just give you, just a very quick rundown. The, obviously, we have presented a balanced budget for you. We did increase the contingency this year to 2.5%, actually, it's a little higher than that now, just because we were a little concerned about what our revenues were going to look like. Although our revenues are still coming in very well. We've been through all the, all the ins and outs of the budget. We did have some new positions, six new positions in the general fund. We did have several promotions, reclassifications, that was our way to avoid new positions. Our capital request increased just a little bit. Overall, I believe that the total expenditures, excluding reserves, you know, increased by 6.8% from the adopted budget last year, including that contingency we talked about of the 2.79%. Other funds, all of those are intact, as we've talked about, they're all, they're all balanced. We do have 25 new positions in all the other funds. We are not using fund balance this year. We did have some specific things that we've already highlighted, some of the highs and lows, I've gone over that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. But before I do that, I just want to give Ms. Reese an opportunity, who is an integral part of this budget, if Ms. Reese, if you have anything you want to add to what I've already said. We'll answer questions from the board, then if there's any questions about the budget.
Right, my understanding is the increase year-over-year, actual to budget, is less than a percent?
That's correct, that's correct. If you look at, if you look at what we, what we actually came in at, which, what we had budgeted, you're correct, it's around 1%. Three quarters of a percent, correct.
In this new budget, we oversee the operation of the PEC is-
We did, we did create a new fund for the Performing Arts Center. We have loaned that new fund, I believe it's $300,000, $300,000 to get that fund started. We are in a position, a part of the approval of the budget also is approval of several individual things. One is that position that we've asked for, but that fund will be a self-sustaining fund. But yes, there is a position in there for a new manager for our PEC.
To stand on its own and not be propped up by-
By taxpayer dollars, yes, sir, that's the reason we made it its own fund. So the idea there would be that whatever money it generates will be the money that it, that it needs to operate.
Any other questions? I just want to, once again, fix the budget.
That's probably, that sounds about right, fix the budget.
Want to thank you and Ms. Reese, especially working with the constitutional officers, sheriff, the tax commissioner, just all the efforts that go in, because I know when we initially start the process, we're way out. Billions of dollars in requests, and there's always been a really good working relationship that you have with the constitutional officers to compromise, to bring that number down, to get it to where we have a balanced budget. And then even this year, just given the uncertainty with COVID, bringing it down even further, that it's basically flat, year-over-year, just in an effort to stay conservative, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the staff, the work they put into it, our constitutional officers, it's really a team effort, we do it a lot different in Columbia County, I'm very proud of our team.
Different times this year, trying to put it together too, I didn't get it-
It was a little different, it was a little difficult trying to have our budget meetings and trying to do things, but our team worked together, we worked together really well. You know, I think that we've, we've been transparent, I know that we've been transparent, and we've talked to everybody that we needed to talk to, and we were able to get it done. But it was a little more difficult than what in our conventional budget year. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right, there's a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Item number two, we're passing on, so I'm going straight to Commissioner Allen for motions.
Sir. Item I-1B1, I would like to make a motion to approve the alcoholic beverage license for Darty 1982 LLC, doing business as Andy's Liquor and Wine.
Chair, second. Chair will second. Any discussion?
Knowing that this, this building is under construction?
It's not under construction at this time, I think the applicant actually asked for an extension in the approval of the license to allow, if the license gets approved now, it's going to take, I believe, some, potentially 18 months, maybe to build it, a year to 18 months to build it. And the way our current code reads, that if they don't start operations within a specified period of time, then they lose that alcoholic beverage license. But I think in this case, you had the applicant wanting to apply for the liquor license in advance, to see if they could get the liquor license before they invested the money in building the building.
So it'll be, so are we giving them a date, or are we just extending them?
I believe it's in, I believe it's in the backup, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Locker, you remember that?
270 days, I believe.
That's correct, 270.
From, from today, or from when they start construction, or when would that date start running?
The actual verbiage is, if a license is issued for the operation of establishment in a building which has not been completed, the license will not be forfeited unless the license fails to begin operation within a period of earlier of 60 days after the CO is awarded, or 180 days from the date of the issuance of the license. They're asking to change that 180 days from the issuance of the license to 270 days from the issuance of the license.
Which would be-
About three more months.
Yeah, if y'all choose to approve it, then Harvard has what he needs to issue the license.
They would have 270 days from tomorrow.
Does the license go with the owner, or does it go with the location?
Owner.
Owner.
The owner.
Yeah, owner.
What happens if he doesn't get finished with construction and begin operations during this?
Have to come back before this board again, because he would, his alcohol license would lapse if he didn't get it done within that specified period of time, whether it was 180 days or the 270 days. Again, that's a risk that that person is taking to build a building, and then not have the license that they need to operate it, or have to come back before this board, who may deny it.
Is there a limit on how soon you can return for an application after lapsing?
I don't believe so, I think you could apply immediately.
Okay.
So lapsing is not the same as having it taken away, it just didn't happen?
It disappears.
Is there anything in code or state law, anything that prohibits alcohol, this liquor store being where he's trying to be?
Nothing in our code.
Anyways-
It passes everything in our code and state code.
There are distances that are in place, but this one is, I'll say strategically, but it is positioned outside of the distances that it needs to be. So it does, it does meet the necessary warrants, or the necessary prohibitions of law, it meets all of those, it's not prohibited.
Questions? There's a motion, the second on the floor, to approve, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
It's four to one.
Motion carries.
All right, sir. Item I-1B2. I make a motion to deny the rezoning from C2 to S1 for a proposed self-storage facility for property located at Tax Map 078D, 021B, 122M, 123B, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Second.
Applicant here? Or anyone representing the applicant? Come on. I think it'd be good to come.
Gary Bennett, 5810, Carrill's Drive.
I thought I recognized.
Couldn't see you back there, you was dark, I couldn't tell that was you.
Dane Hyde.
So. Clock tower. We've knocked it down.
He put it to, he met code, and met all the stipulations the Planning Commission put on him. So he went from 125, I think it was, to 60-foot?
Tell me about this clock tower, how is, is this a metal structure, is it wood, is it stick-built, what's inside this?
It is a metal structure that the owner has designed himself, and actually, it's a landmark in Conyers at this point. And he wanted to build something similar, of course, it didn't meet the high requirements of the code. He's found a way to bring this down to 60-foot, and it would look very similar to this, minus the roof structure on top, which I think is a cupola, I think.
So it would have three, three sections?
Aren't you an engineer, is it a cupola?
I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer.
But that piece right there.
Yeah, it's a cupola.
So it would have three sections instead of-
Yes, it'll have three sections, and it'll be no higher than 60-foot, to meet code.
Is this, is this thing?
Is it functional, Gary? Is it a building that you, he's going to do something?
No, there will be, there's no, the only access into it will be for magnets, to get to the clock.
It's a sign.
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's no access inside of it for maintenance.
So there's not a stairwell up inside it?
There's a series of ladders to get up to the top, so that he can maintain the clock.
So, let's, let's understand, set aside, understanding that this is for marketing purposes, advertising, it's a sign, we get that. You mentioned it's a landmark in Conyers. The location of this particular storage facility, a landmark there serves, again, understanding advertising for the facility itself, serves what purpose? That's a somewhat labyrinthine area back there. My concern is, someone told me that he wanted, or I think I heard it from him in a minute, that he wanted to be seen from Bobby Jones', but it's not accessible from Bobby Jones'.
It is accessible from Bobby Jones'.
Well, I mean, eventually.
There's, no, there's an access easement along the mattress store, to get along to the church, to get to Rose Street, and there will be an entrance right there.
Can you draw that for me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That doesn't stop there? That is a full access to Rose Street.
There is an easement that allows access through there, between the liquor store and mattress store, which gets back to the church property, all the way to Rose Street.
Will it be taller than the church steeple?
I think there's a steeple there.
Okay.
There isn't.
But, I mean, he has reduced the design of the thing to meet code. He's not asking for any variance to that, it will meet code, there's nothing that-
But, but that is his sign, is that correct?
It will be his sign, yeah.
And our new sign ordinance is, how tall?
55, right? I mean, theoretically, it's-
That's a building, he's going off the building height.
Right, but our, our sign is 15 feet.
15 feet, I think, for us, true sign.
So is this a sign, or is this part of the building, I'm confused? When is it?
It'll be built as part of the building, if we can go back to the other-
The example in Conyers. Right there.
So, yeah, there will be the office building at the corner, which will be built off of that structure.
But it's not a functional part of the building?
No, there's no, it's not a usable space.
So it's the sign?
It's a clock tower.
But it's got a sign on it?
It'll have a clock on it.
But not a name?
He can put his name on it, yeah.
Then it's a sign. I'm asking-
And that's what, that was always the argument, of how, how do you classify this back and forth?
Matt, how tall is Tax Layer?
55, I believe.
So this will be taller than the Tax Layer building on Rose Street.
That's quite a monument to be over there with cabinet shops and car repair shops.
Gary, I think what we're struggling with is, it's a sign, it's a signage of the building, it's not a functional building, and so it doesn't meet code for a sign.
Right.
Is it a sign, or is it a building? Which code are you approaching?
Building sign.
It's a clock tower, I mean, if it functions as a sign, it functions as a sign. We went round and round with planning staff on how this needed to be worded, and how it needed to be done in order to meet the code. So it wasn't that we trying to slip this in, we worked with staff for multiple months to come to this conclusion. There was multiple concessions made to get to this point where we're at now. So, we always had a discussion of if it was a tower, or steeple, or billboard. And I think the staff leaned towards stunt sign, which I don't disagree with, so we met their requirements to do the signage portion of it.
Well-
Because it's going to be classified as a sign by the county.
Building that has a sign on it, theoretically.
Theoretically, yes. Classified as a wall sign.
Page two of the staff report, about halfway down, there's the discussion, where staff came to the discussion back and forth regarding the balance between the height, billboard of 60 feet. Now, there was discussion back and forth, building, all sign, is it a billboard? What is that function?
Conclusion was?
60 feet. That's perspective. Structure, all sign. One-story structure. Allowed to put a wall sign. Specified dimension, not under code. Again, by right, preference known, they would have five-foot height, height limitation. Five feet in height, all sign on it.
But you're, and I asked him for 55, you're asking for-
And that was- That was the halfway balance, the 120 that was originally requested.
And that was based on how it was interpreted as a wall sign billboard?
But if it's a building, it can't be more than 55.
Arguably, if it's, if it's not a functional structure, arguably, a whole sign, kind of, not a wall sign, have a lower threshold for the feet.
I guess. Yarster Triumph is not on a side street off, in the middle of a parish suburb somewhere, is all, the fact that this is a 60-foot obelisk on Rose Street, behind Lowe's-
Right.
Is just so-
Well, he's, he's wanting to develop-
Did you design this, Mr. Bennett?
Infilling the Martinez area, and that's just one of the things he wants to put on his, on up.
Mr. Bennett, did you design this? You're not the architect, you're just the-
No, I'm the civil engineer, I'm not the structural-
The architect, and it won't offend you personally, this is tacky, and it is, it is not attractive, and I, because I'm elected and I get to sit here, I have the privilege of saying that, and I just don't like it. And that's not your fault personally, you're just here representing your client, but I, I don't think this is a good idea. Is there, is there a compromise?
Yeah, I mean, it really comes to that, I mean, it's just, and I know that it was originally 100, twice this, but I mean, it's still, over a six-story structure of a needle. Again, in an area, like you say, with cabinet shops, and we've brought Rose Street a long way, but it's not a major thoroughfare, by any stretch of the imagination. So, is, is there any room here, you think, on his part to compromise a six-story?
I mean, we, we worked two months with planning staff to try to get to this point for compromise, so I don't see that there's an issue with trying to go any further. Like I said, he is not here, he's in Covington, so.
All right, well, right now, we have a motion to deny, on, we can vote on that. I would be willing to withdraw, or we can have a vote and get that out of the way, I'd be willing to pick against my own motion if-
He can make a motion to amend.
Yeah, or, um-
Why don't you do that instead of us?
To, but there's two ways we can do this, basically, we can put a restriction on it, that he may or may not want to make, once you talk to him.
Correct.
Or we can table it and further discussion.
Probably, I would think that tabling it would be, that way we can have further discussion, and it's not a, but, I don't tell him what's the-
Because if we vote, he's going to tug, right?
Best way to handle it as far as administratively. You know, try not to, trying to avoid a vote, saying no, so we table it, that'll give some opportunity for him, at least, we can have some more discussions. What, since we've got on the record that it's tacky-
You can put that in minutes, yes.
And that District 1 doesn't like it, what, what would be something that would be approvable by the board?
30 feet?
Half, yeah. I'd be willing to accept half, and a 30-foot structure, again, will be seen over there. A 60-foot structure is just going to be an anomaly, it'll definitely get people's attention, but they'll wonder what the heck it's doing over there. I mean, I don't know that it's going to necessarily draw a lot of people to using his, his business, that's my opinion, but, yeah, I would, I would think that half. That's my opinion, but yeah, I would, I would think that half would be something that I could get behind, I could support.
And, and more welcome to take that to the owner and let him, but if we table it, we'll go to that point, I'll, I'll let him know what the recommendation on the board is, and from that point...
Could amend your motion to say we table it till the next meeting?
Is that a, or is that a totally new motion? Is that an amendment, or is that, should I withdraw and just offer to table?
You can have a motion to, to table, second, and without getting rid of the first motion, it's just whether or not you feel like you're out of position, or you have the compromise you want, just go ahead and do it.
I don't think Gary's...
Yeah, I can't, I can't make that decision for him, but I know that the most important thing is to get this thing zoned, because it's, it's been parceled up, and he's combined these properties, currently at least get them all to the same, same zoning.
Understand, I mean, I, I understand...
But this is part of that rezoning application, so it's...
If, if, I, I, I understand counsel's point. I mean, if, if we pretty much have thirty in mind, tabling it, if he doesn't agree to that, won't really change anything. That's pretty much the agreement. So we could just go ahead and pass that, and if he changes his mind, doesn't want to build it.
Withdraw later if he did.
So...
Being S1, so there are, there are conditions to S1, so you could add a condition or change a condition as you see fit, and, and approve that the way you see fit.
Right.
Which is a clean way to do it, but certainly tabling it is, is, is also, you know, a way to do that. But again, goes back to your point of whether or not you're going to be willing to compromise at that point. I think, I think you're allowed to do it. Of course, I'm, I'm using the word allowed very, very loosely, because you're the board, you can do whatever you like, but I think from staff's perspective, you could go either route.
Right. All right. Well, I'll tell you what, then, I'll, I'll amend my motion, let's go ahead and get it out of the way. I, I will amend my motion to approve the rezoning from C2 to S1 for a proposed self-storage facility for the property located at the tax map designated zero seven eight D, zero twenty-one B, one twenty-two, and one twenty-three B, subject to the previous conditions enumerated in the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission report, as well as the additional condition that the building not exceed thirty feet for the clock tower.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
So the ball's in his court, and he can either take that or decide not to build it.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Am I done? No. Item I-1B3, I make a motion to approve the rezoning from R1 and M1 to M1, located at tax map zero seven four one one seven, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Second.
Lockyer?
As, as you see on the map here, this will allow them to construct a small office slash warehouse subdivision.
Any more? Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Item I-1B4, I make a motion to approve the rezoning from RA to S1, tax map zero zero nine zero one nine A, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 4th, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Second.
Before an event space out off of White Oak Road, there's an existing barn out there, be able to hold weddings. They are capped at a two-hundred-person limit on this.
On the weekends, is that...
Yes, that's correct. Setup can happen during the week, but the actual event will take place on the weekend, or a, a holiday that falls during the week.
Questions?
This is previously used for events?
It was.
Hmm? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Richardson?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the purchase of the required stream mitigation credits from Blue Way out of the Brushy Creek Med, mitigation bank in amount of one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty cents for the Furious Ferry Road widening project.
Second.
This is required to do in order to get our, our proper permits to widen Furious Ferry[1739.61]